Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, we're getting ready to start our meeting. I want to welcome everyone to our regular board meeting today, October 17, 2023. If everyone could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
Trustee Middleton?
Present.
Trustee Engenga?
Here.
Trustee Gail?
Here.
Trustee Lency?
Here.
Trustee White?
Present.
Trustee Saunders?
Here.
Okay, she's here. All right. Please note, Trustee Saunders has participated in Vera Video Conference this evening. VP Kelly?
Here.
And President Kerwin?
Here.
We have a quorum. Yeah. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Darcy Miller.
Hello. Board members, community... Darcy Miller, 101 Brookfield Road, Mount Vernon. I am here representing the Mount Vernon Educational Foundation. The Educational Foundation, I was here a year ago, actually, talking about the same thing, but we have, we've had some great success, and I want to talk about that briefly and encourage people to get involved with the foundation. So during my tenure on the Board, we realized that the Educational Foundation, which is the nonprofit, independent nonprofit organization that bridges opportunities supported by the community and corporate entities to the schools, so supporting activities that aren't part of the school's normal curriculum. And we were able to, through a group effort of administration and board members, regain our nonprofit status, our 501(c)(3), and we launched the, we launched the Educational Foundation right at the beginning of the pandemic. As some of, many of you may know, we didn't have a chance to really think about what we were going to do for our first initiative for the district, but we were pressed into service to raise money. We did raise money for $35,000 for laptops, for devices, when we had to move to remote learning in the district. So that was a very successful start. Through a consensus and a discussion with, with the district, including Dr. Doggett and Dr. Jagnandan, we, we, and through inspiration from the Trappaggen Bots, when they did a robotics program at the Trappaggen School years ago, we decided to be a great idea to fund an after-school robotics program for fifth and sixth graders. So we did this last year. We raised thirty-some thousand dollars last year. We started it at Benjamin Turner School. It was very successful. We had a very capable and able administrator in Ms. Catherine Olson, and we had a very good attendance rate, and we actually even saw some data this week that indicates that math scores may have actually improved. I'm not sure if we can say it's a direct correlation with participation in the program, but it certainly is an outcome that we were looking for, and we, we hope we can encourage. So based on the success of our program last year, this fall, we are, and I believe you voted on a resolution at your last board meeting to fund the PD for the teachers who will be running the program after school, we're rolling the program out to five additional schools. So starting in the last quarter of this calendar year, we will be rolling out the program. It'll stay, it'll still be at Benjamin Turner. We'll be rolling it out to Parker, Pennington, Lincoln, Hamilton, and Holmes. Holmes is, is that the Honor Academy now? And the Honor Academy. So we'll be at, we'll be at six schools starting the end of this year, and I must say that it's been a real delight working with Dr. Doggett and Dr. Jagnandan, and I'm very excited that they've embraced this program and that the students have embraced this program. So I'm here this evening to give you the update, which I just did, but also to encourage you, because this is, this is an organization that, that lives and breathes as a kind of community-supported organization. So I know we pay school taxes in this community, but this is also an opportunity for us to close the, the opportunity gap that our students experience, bringing new experiences to them after school, and that's the whole point of the foundation. So our funding thus far has been through the generous donations of people in our very community, some people who live in adjoining communities that we've reached out to as a board, but I am encouraging you to attend our fundraiser next Tuesday night. I've put out invitations in front of all of you. I believe Mike Beeger is going to be posting the invitation on the district website. Dr. Jagn, Dr. Doggett certainly is aware of it, and Rita has a copy of the invitation, but I encourage you to come, and if you can't attend, it's cocktails and light food and fun. And if you can't attend, please donate. This is really important, and based on the success of this first program that we're doing, we really hope to be able to go out and, and secure some corporate sponsorships that, you know, corporations that both live and breathe in Mount Vernon, but also in surrounding areas that are interested in STEM, STEM issues. So then I won't have to come and ask individual people to open their own pocketbooks and, and give us money, or give the students money. But anyway, it's totally tax deductible, so think about it. I encourage you to do it, and I look forward to seeing you there next Tuesday night, the 24th. It's at the Alternative Brewing Company from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and we appreciate your support, and I know the students will as well. Thank you very much.
That ends our public comments. We're on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank Ms. Cohen. She is the culinary arts teacher at Mount Vernon High School for a delicious dinner tonight. She served to the board of trustees as well as the cabinet members. I want to thank her so very much. The first person I would like to call up is Rebecca Jones. She will introduce Ms. Suss.
Thank you so much for making me a doctor, Dr. Smith. I'll take it. I'm good. I'll take it. Good evening, Dr. Smith, superintendent of schools, your cabinet, the board trustees, Madam President, everyone who's here tonight, members of the community. My name is Rebecca Jones, and I, of course, am the proud principal of Lincoln School, and I am delighted tonight to introduce someone who has been a friend to me and a friend to Lincoln School, and in fact, the Mount Vernon community. Kathleen Suss is the executive director of Concordia Conservatory of Music, and since forging a partnership with her some years ago, she has provided a host of music programs to our school and the district that have been phenomenal. But I will tell you that tonight, she is going to talk about a program that will be really astounding for our students. She wants to make a meaningful and a lasting difference in the lives of our students through music, and we know what the research tells us about students who play an instrument, that they are at least one to two years more advanced academically than those peers who are not. But aside from that, they will learn the love of music, and they will gain enduring life skills such as discipline and hard work and a passion for something apart from their academic studies, and it poises them for great success. So without further ado, I will bring up Kathleen Suss, who will talk about that program this evening. Thank you. Happy evening, one and all. It is an honor to be before the Mount Vernon City School District Board. One more time, for the last 27 years, I have had the joy of applying for grants, having, having students come from the Mount Vernon City School District to study at Concordia Conservatory, and have had the great honor of applying for the grant we are about to talk about. So Concordia Conservatory completed our Spring String Poetry Project at Lincoln Elementary School. Yes, we did indeed, last May, and it was through grant funding from Arts Westchester and another grant from, yes, the Junior League of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Mount Vernon. This project comprised of in-school music sessions led by Concordia Conservatory violin faculty Hubert Chen and Emmanuel Manolov, and to the entire grade four of Lincoln Elementary. And we linked the music to poetry writing during the month of April, National Poetry Month. The Lincoln Elementary students learned to play the violin with the very basics of technique and rudiments of music theory, and the students additionally wrote poetry in their language arts classes, inspired and based on the process of learning to play the violin, attaining several of the New York State Learning Standards. The poetry writing was led by the fourth grade faculty of Lincoln Elementary, Ms. Modesta Speis and Ms. Mary Ann Walsh. I say, those learning goals of the Spring Strings Poetry Program with the Conservatory were fully met and fully realized by the fourth grade, with student participation and engagement in the violin classes and learning to play an instrument and in their final ceremony and performance in April, and that the poetry was written by each student. It was beautiful, and it was a beautiful partnership between four organizations. Rebecca was so nice in the beginning to talk about me, but it's about Concordia Conservatory, the Mount Vernon City School District, and Arts Westchester, and the Junior League. And yes, this embodies our mission. So we are ready to partner, because that was a pilot program for a school in your district that has one of the most outstanding and stellar thoughts of starting 10 years ago. Was it 10 years ago that we started the Danzil Washington School? And to be able to feed into that and to really give it a grassroots, in addition to all of the great general music that's happening in the district at every elementary school. So we are committed to making this program continue on, but not for four weeks, and not just during National Poetry Month, but we want to start a string program in Lincoln Elementary for the fourth grade for the next five years, having string instruction for every fourth grader that we will personally fund from our music outreach program in our schools.
Excellent.
But we'll need you to vote on that tonight, so you've got to say yes. So Concordia Conservatory's profound commitment to community outreach has led us to establishing all these programs over all these years in the Mount Vernon City School District. I can't begin to tell, I think, I said, I applied for 17 grants for the district alone in my 27 years, and I'm happy to say that we got every one. So this is what we are about, is bringing music to all people. Yes, we have lots of full tuition-bearing students that come to Concordia Conservatory, but we also have lots of students that come from Mount Vernon, from the Danzil Washington, that are receiving full scholarships, are not only studying privately, but they're also coming to our academy program, which is a pre-college honors program. We have a tuition-free holiday musical that also helps all those students to have more opportunities. That is who we are, and that is what we are for early childhood, youth, and adult programming, and for all audiences. You thought it was just for youth. You all could be taking lessons, too. The Conservatory's mission is to inspire, instruct, and enrich lives through music, offering excellence in education and performance. I thank you for the opportunity to do it again this year and for the future, and this is the perfect example of community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Suss. Next, I will call up Dr. Marie Gabotan. She will be speaking firstly about the graduation rates, and then she will speak about whistleblowing, of whistleblowing policy. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I will call my phone. So tonight, we will be talking about the Mount Vernon City District graduation rate. Keep in mind, the 2223 data is estimation only. Next, please. So to understand the graduation rate, you have to understand the idea of cohort. So it is the number of students that enters ninth grade after finishing the eighth grade. So for example, our current ninth graders, this class of 2022, that is the cohort. The graduation rate four years from now is the data that we look at. There's a big difference between graduation rate and completion data. Completion occurs up to year five of when you, students are supposed to graduate, or year six. Next, please. So let's take a look at a five-year review of the Mount Vernon graduation rate. 2018, 2019, the cohort was 561, 394 students graduate. That puts us at 70.2%. This is pre-COVID still. 2019, 2020, the cohort is 557, 377 students graduate, 67.7%. We are taking regents, New York State had just started with CEDAS. 2020, 2021 school year, in the midst of COVID, 511 was in the cohort. 368 students graduated, 72%. Now, in the midst of the pandemic, in 2020, 2021, 22 school year, the cohort is 510, 403 students graduated at 79%. New York State gave us lots of caveat to graduate our student. 2223, everyone take Regents exams again. So these are our numbers after the August graduate. 520 students in that cohort, 395 graduate. This, this number includes both five and six years, and puts us at 76% district-wide. Next, please. So the actual cohort, 520, we graduated, so those students who entered in 2019, 520 entered, we graduate 386. So our graduation rate is 74.2. This does not include three students who graduate early. They're, they're part of a three-year, okay? But our students, we have a lot of students who are in Above and Beyond. Eighty students graduated with an Advanced Regents diploma, whether it was in math, science, so they receive an Advanced Regents, meaning they took all nine assessment. Six of our students received the Seal of Biliteracy, meaning they're fluent in another language other than English. In 21, at the end of 2122, we applied for the Seal of Civic Weddiness. It looked at civic participation and civic knowledge, meaning these students have a understanding on how democracy runs, how our local government runs, they did a project. Forty-one students received the Seal of Civic Weddiness. Our goal for this school year is more than 100 to 120 students receiving the Seal of Civic Weddiness. So let's look at the graduation by school. So in 2122, Mount Vernon High School had a cohort of 322 students, 236 graduate, that brings us to 73.3%. Mount Vernon Steam had 119 ninth graders entered, 110 graduate, 92.4%. The Danzil Washington School of the Art had 56 ninth graders enter, 53 graduated, to a 94.6%. Remember, this is COVID, we have a lot of exemptions. 2223, Mount Vernon High School had a cohort of 285 students, 202 graduate, 70.9%. Mount Vernon Steam had 149 students enter the cohort, 123 graduate, for 82.6%. The Danzil Washington School had 61 students. As of August, all 61 received their high school diploma for 100% graduation rate. Overall, when you take the math for all three high schools, the district is at a 74.2% graduation rate.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Gabotan? Very good, Dr. Gabotan.
All right. So the other part of my job is policy. So one of our policy I wanted to read tonight is the whistleblower policy. This policy could find, be found in the Board Doc Policy 5000 Non-Instructional Business Application. This policy has been active since 2014 and has been revised three times. This policy is intended to encourage district staff, paid and volunteer, and others to report suspected or actual occurrence of illegal, unethical, or inappropriate event behaviors or practices without retribution. The whistleblower should promptly report the suspect or actual event to his or her supervisor. The whistleblower would be uncomfortable or otherwise reluctant to report his/her supervisor, then the whistleblower could report the event to the next highest or another level of district administration, including to an appropriate board committee or member. The whistleblower can report the event with his or her identity or anonymously. The whistleblower shall receive no retaliation or retribution for a report that was provided in good faith, that was not done primarily with malice to damage another or the organization. A whistleblower who makes a report that is not done in good faith is subject to discipline, including termination of employment relationship. Anyone who retaliates against the whistleblower, who reported an event in good faith, will be subjected to discipline, including termination of employment. Crimes against persons or properties such as assault, rape, burglary, et cetera, should be immediately reported to local law enforcement personnel. District administrators who receive the report must promptly act to investigate and/or resolve the issue. Board members who receive report must immediately refer to the matter to the board president and/or superintendent of schools. The whistleblower shall receive a report within five business days of the initial report regarding the investigation, disposition, or resolution of the issue. If the investigation of a report that was done in good faith and investigated by internal personnel is not to be the whistleblower's satisfaction, then he or she has the right to report the event to the appropriate legal or investigative agency. The identity of the whistleblower, if known, shall remain confidential to those persons directly involved in applying this policy, unless the issue requires investigation by law enforcement, in which case, member of the organization is subjected to subpoena. If any employee reasonably believes that some policy, practice, or activity of the Mount Vernon City School District is in violation of the law, a written complaint must be filed by that employee with the superintendent of school or the board president. It is the intent of the Mount Vernon City School District to adhere to all laws and regulations that apply to the organization, and the underlying purpose of this policy is to support the Mount Vernon City School District's goal of legal compliance. The support of all employees is for retaliation only if the employee brings their alleged unlawful activities, policy, practices to the attention of the Mount Vernon City School District, and provide the Mount Vernon City School District with a reasonable opportunity to investigate and correct their alleged unlawful activity. The protection described below is only available to employees that comply with this requirement. The Mount Vernon City School District will not retaliate against an employee who in good faith has made a protest or raised a complaint against some practice of the Mount Vernon City School District, or of another individual or entity within whom the Mount Vernon City School District has a business relationship. Thank you. No question.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Gabotan. That ends the superintendent report.
Okay, we have our presentation next by Terrence Horton.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Terrence Horton, president, CEO, Sentinel, Sentinel Consortium. We are currently at 12 East Third Street in the city of Mount Vernon. I would like to start by thanking board member President Lauren Curran, board member Adrian Saunders, and Mark Brumandi, Associate Superintendent for Operations and Accountability, for affording Sentinel the opportunity to present this exciting opportunity to you, the Mount Vernon City School Board District, for first consideration. Sentinel Technologies SVP Lynn Bailey will moderate, and Daniel Simon, President of RPE Royal Power Energy, will engage this esteemed body after we get started. So here we go.
Good evening, Mount Vernon City School District. Thank you very much for this opportunity. So this evening, we're going to talk a little bit about a brand-new, what I call a game-changing technology. But before we get into that, I thought we would take a couple minutes and just kind of walk you through some of the past projects that we've done with the Mount Vernon City School District, and they've been quite successful. For example, for example... Next slide. We started working with the Mount Vernon City School District and Mount Vernon High School all the way back in 2007. We actually held a ceremony to honor four outstanding young female students from the high school, and we honored them because of their accomplishment in science and math. Then in 2014, we actually had a very hands-on program where we taught Mount Vernon High School students how to do basic installation, the installation of LED lights, and this was actually done right in the Mount Vernon High School. So we have a good history of working with the students and teaching them a skill set that they can use in the future. Let's go to the next slide. So that gives you an idea of some of the past accomplishments. Let's talk about something present in the next slide. What we've done is that we have partnered with some of the largest corporations. For example, in August of last year, we brought McKissick and McKissick... For example, in August of last year, we brought McKissick and McKissick into Mount Vernon. They're now domicile with an office on East Third Street in the city of Mount Vernon. Folks, this is a multi-billion dollar company, and why is that important to the city school district? Because Cheryl McKissick, the CEO of McKissick and McKissick, has committed to a jobs program right here in Mount Vernon. The same thing with Hill Group. They are another multi-billion corporation that we are responsible for bringing into Mount Vernon. Not only have they donated into our 501(c)(3), but they also have committed to creating jobs and joining in some of the programs that were, a comp- that were preparing in order to bring to high school students and integrate that into your curriculum. Let's go to the next slide. So let's talk about the future, because this is why we're here today, and this is one of the key reasons why we're presenting. So Sentinel has partnered with Royal Power Energy, represented here by Dan Simon, the President of Royal Power. Royal Power has, is committed to the city of Mount Vernon. Very importantly, they've also opened an office, and they have what I would prefer to as a game-changing technology. It's called their Omnipower Automatic Power Factor Correction System. What is that? I'll tell you in the next slide, but first, I want to highlight the benefits of why Om- Royal Power is important to the city school district. Royal Power would like, their, their equipment will be assembled and maintained and fabricated out of their offices in Mount Vernon. And the key to the city school district is that they're looking to train kids from Mount Vernon City School District and integrate them into their operations right here based in Mount Vernon. So we'd like to see if we can't get some kids from the STEM program and actually give them real-world experience for what they're learning in the classroom. So let's go to the next slide. And this is very important, because ConEd just announced this program last month, and we have been in touch with ConEd to try and be a part of this one million dollar grant program, uh, through our, through our Sentinel Vocational Apprentice Training Program, which is our registered 501(c)(3), and we've gotten excellent feedback from ConEdison. And so this will give us even more resources to expand the programs that we want to bring to Mount Vernon City School District, to the high school students, and to your STEM program. So as I mentioned before, one of the key reasons why we're here is because we'd like for the city school district to consider adopting Omnipower, which is Royal Power Energy's signature product, into the school district. So let's talk about the benefits and exactly what power factor is. Let's go to the next slide. So as I said, Royal Power's signature product is their Omnipower Power Factor Correction System. So the first question you have to ask is, what in the world is power factor? Well, let's go to the next slide. And next one. The easiest way to explain power factor is to can, think about a glass of beer. If you, if the bartender pours your glass of beer, there's usually a little bit of froth on the top, right? Well, in our example here, that is wasted electricity. So ConEdison, your utility delivers everything to you, and you pay for that entire glass of beer, you pay for that, all of that electricity. However, there is wasted electricity. How does it get wasted? Well, it starts off leaving a ConEdison substation perfectly at what we call a zero-point-nine-eight power factor. However, as it travels down the cables and the infrastructure, it loses its quality, and so it becomes what we call in the industry, dirty power. And guess what, folks? You're still paying for that. High school, junior high school, all of your facilities, you're overpaying for stuff you're not using. So what does Omnipower Power Factor Correction do? Let's go to the next slide. First of all, I think it's very, very important to notice what's highlighted in red. This technology is patented, so there's nothing else like it in the world. Number one, it automatically detects the power factor coming into the facility, it cleans the power to a perfect zero-point-nine-eight power factor, reducing your cost for electricity, reducing how much you pay to ConEdison. That's huge. But in addition to cost savings, guess what, folks? It also eliminates voltage spikes, harmonics, which means that the equipment in your facility, your computers, your pumps, your motors, all of that works so much more efficiently, and that you can actually get twenty to thirty percent additional maintenance out of your equipment. Let's go to the next slide. So, a few benefits to adopting Omnipower throughout the city school district facilities are, number one, you're gonna reduce your monthly power bill from ConEdison by anywhere from around typically eighteen percent, sometimes up to twenty-five percent. So there's some hard dollar savings for you that are tangible. And obviously, reducing your greenhouse emissions is important to the school district, and typically, we're seeing emission reduction of up to twenty percent. As I, and as I said before, no more dirty power coming into the facility, wreaking havoc on your servers, or your pumps, your motors, your compressors, it's gonna be clean power, no voltage spikes. Let's go to the next, and before you go to the next slide, I wanna highlight one thing. You notice there are two pictures here. One is of a very small Omnipower at the top, and the other's of a larger system. What's great about this system is that it is modular. So if you have a small facility, we put in a small system. If you have a larger facility with a lot of usage, that needs a lot of cleaning, well then the, the actual equipment is larger, and we can actually string multiple Omnipowers together. Next slide. So before we go to, um, the case studies, I want to mention this very importantly. Omnipower has been adopted by ConEdison, and it is a, and it has been approved by NISERTA. It is what's called Epre Labs Certified. So your question is, what is Epre Labs? Epre Labs is the UL for utilities. So before utility use any equipment, it has to be Epre Labs Certified. That is how high up this certification is on this equipment, for it to be adopted by ConEdison and approved by NISERTA. Let's take a couple quick case studies, then we'll wrap up. Next slide. So we put our equipment in Commvault. So, if you don't know who Commvault is, they're, they are a massive three-hundred-thousand-square-foot facility in Tintum Falls, New Jersey. They have high-tech data, highly secure facility. JCPNL, the utility in New Jersey, could not guarantee Commvault that they would have clean power and a good power factor. And so the utility actually told Commvault to call us, to call Royal Power, and install the Omnipower. And so the result is that they have reduced their energy bill by around twenty-eight percent. Imagine that, twenty-eight percent per month off your energy bill, they have perfect power factor, and all of that high-tech equipment in the facility is operating in peak condition. Let's take a smaller example in the next slide. This is Royal Waste in Queens, New York. Let's go to the next slide. And as I mentioned, it's a smaller facility, but they had the same issue. The power coming in from ConEdison, by the time it got to their facility, it was what we call dirty power, voltage spikes, low power factor. So they couldn't, they were not getting a great electricity. So we installed the Omnipower, and they're saving around eighteen percent per month on their utility bill. So that gives you a couple ideas, a couple good case studies. Uh, we just went through rather quickly exactly what Omnipower Power Factor is. So hopefully, everyone feels really smart, they now know power factor, you can tell your friends, I know what power factor is. Let's wrap up, um, because we had an opportunity to do a walkthrough at a high school. Let's go to the next slide. And so let's talk about the next steps, because we would really like for the school district to consider adopting this technology throughout your facilities. And I know you're thinking in the back of your head, and I'll answer the question on the next slide. How much does it cost? What's this gonna cost me? Let's hold that thought, we'll wrap up with what it costs. So we went through the high school on October eleventh. We logged in a lot of data, um, voltage coming in. Uh, for example, in the high school, that filtration system, Omnipower would be perfect because it would help to keep or maintain that, uh, and avoid voltage spikes hitting that equipment. So as I said, we already did the assessment, we've looked at some of the usage, it'd be a good candidate for Omnipower. So now let's answer the question, what's this gonna cost? Let's go to the final slide and the next steps. So here's how, here's how we work, folks. The first thing is that we do a thorough power quality analysis of whatever facility you'd like us to take a look at. Next, we actually put what's called a dranet meet, uh, dranet meter to monitor the power factor for two weeks, and we get a good idea, we get a good reading of what the power factor is. And now if that site, if we deem that it qualifies for the Omnipower, then we would give you a detailed savings report, and guess what it cost you? Nothing. We will install, we will maintain this system at no cost to the city school district, we simply share the savings. We put the money out, we save you money, we save you maintenance on your equipment, and we share the savings. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, before you have questions. Hey, Dan, did you wanna say a few words?
So, before the questions, please, this is the president.
Go ahead, Dan.
And I, I think, besides the system, because I've been dealing with the system, uh, for many years, um, I was in ConEdison for forty years, and I was in some command for nine-eleven, and when I retired, I just jumped into energy savings, which turned out to be fantastic. But what I'm more excited about is teaching young children what to do. It's important. If you look around the world and you get a plumber, or electrician, or a mechanic, these are the people making serious money. And I think that if you stimulate somebody at a young age, and you get them interested in something, they will trumpet it. I myself went to college, and I was a mortician, and I quit being a mortician, because when I got out of college, I didn't like it, and I went into ConEdison, and it stimulated me. So it's important, it's important. Um, uh, the product works great, it's fantastic, it saves energy, everything's becoming electric now, they're doing away with the gas, they're doing away with your oil, they're doing away with everything, but the electric is just gonna keep going up, and up, and up. That's basically what I have to say. Uh, any questions? Yes?
Do you service any of the school districts with this, with?
No, not one in any school districts, no.
So this would be your first run?
Be the first one, yes.
And how long has, uh, Royal Power Energy been in business, Sentinel?
Um, so we've been in business about six years. It took us like three years just to get off the ground and get the patent, getting a patent's very tough, especially on something like this. So we actually, uh, installed our first system maybe three or four years ago.
Okay, that was all that.
Oh yeah, we're in the process of, uh, installing in the Prudential Center right now, um, and we also, oh, and the other thing I wanna mention is that we won the award from ConEdison to relieve sixteen megawatts of power in the Jamaica network. So that's why this is all coming about, because we need to warehouse them, uh, fabricate them, and ship them out and install them. So that's why we picked Mount Vernon to do that in this area here. But sixteen megawatts is a lot, it's the first of one network, it would cost them billions of dollars to build a new station, but instead, they're gonna start installing these systems throughout the network, and we're presently working with Jamaica Hospital as our first test case. That's it? That was easy. Thank you.
Very briefly, everyone, thank you for the opportunity. Sentinel, we've been doing vocational programs through the, in through a partnership with Mount Vernon City School District for a few years now. We graduated our class, um, in twenty fourteen, and we had a, a emphasis on introducing young ladies into this, um, field. So, part of our, um, main focus will, to help encourage women of, of all areas to be able to consider being project managers, construction managers, engineers, and technicians. What's so huge about this is, as, um, the president of Royal Power just said, this, this, they're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars worth of new projects. This is a paradigm shift. HC, HRC, and New York State has just declared, you cannot build any new building that uses federal or state funding that is not all-electric. There is no way that we're gonna be able to develop the city of Mount Vernon unless we have this product installed, because all the other municipalities, no building can you get gas anymore. So with that, in, with taking that in consideration, we have all of these new job careers, these are careers that we will be introducing as this paradigm shift. There is no one else that would be able to train, and then as soon as they done getting their, their first, uh, basic training, there will be a true job waiting for them to be able to apply this, this new training for. So we're not just talking about training people, giving them a certificate, and sending them out there saying, look for a job. We will be able to place these individuals that have the aptitude to be able to participate. It will, um, the Mount Vernon City District will be the first to be able to have a true robust, sustainable job program that goes along with this, uh, program. So at the same time, you're saving in your buildings, and in the very buildings that the, that these kids are learning about, they have a, a true test, um, project to be able to, for them to hands-on and understand. I can't over emphasize how important that is, that we have these jobs and these programs and the training to go along with what we have, yes?
Will you be doing the training inside the schools?
Well, at this particular point, we've just made our pitch. I have trained in the school, uh, in twenty fourteen, I graduated two classes, and it was a success. Some of those individuals have gone on to some of the projects we would be on, because as of being a 501(c)(3), it's my responsibility to track some of these individuals. Now, at, at this point, once you be, once you really see the virtues and the benefits that this will be, not just to you, but to taxpayers, the city of Mount Vernon, and everybody uh, within this region, the, once you get a chance to really, uh, understand what it can deliver to you and change the, the, the trajectory of, of this school district, then you will say, then you'll come on and you'll look at what ConEd is producing, because ConEd has a very thorough, detailed, uh, uh, program. We are gonna follow their, um, their requirements, and then at that particular point, when you get to, to understand what's available, you will build your curriculum and your program on behind that, because that, the, the funding, which is the, the last thing I wanna, um, um, impart with, ConEd is putting out a million-dollar grant that is gonna be, within one month, they're gonna fund, there's no one that has been this aggressive to put out that kind of money for just the first year. So that's what's to letting you know, this is where the entire industry is shifting, and the city of Mount Vernon is the first, because Omnipower will have their, will be domicile within the city of Mount Vernon. With that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Real good information. So we're, we're gonna go on to committee reports. All right, so we're gonna do committee reports. Justice Middleton?
I wanna say good evening to everybody, and I want to, and am grateful, thank, um, Mr. Brumandi, uh, we had a facilities meeting this past week, and, um, it was good to know and great to know that, um, things were being, um, brought to attention, and as per that, um, were accomplished in some places, areas we have yet to continue to make things happen, but they're on the roll, and I must say, Mr. Brumandi, Mike LaGusa, and Mr. Silva, and, um, it was just great to hear what was being accomplished, so I thought it was great, and, um, one day at a time, you know, making progress. And I do wanna say that, um, I was invited, um, to the STEAM Academy yesterday, today for their career, um, college fair, which was fantastic. As a former counselor, I joined in, I felt like I was working again. But it was great today, um, yesterday. But it was great today, um, yesterday, and I'm going back on Friday. And um, those who did show up from the different, various colleges, the students were very impressed. Um, they came in droves and it was just wonderful. And I did love that the EMT representative Omar was there, gave a good presentation for those students who wanted to get involved and engaged. Said he was bringing back three ambulances and would allow them the opportunity to see what's what on them and even give them a job opportunity if they were very interested. So it was, it was wonderful. And um, like I said, I felt like I was working again. So we took pictures, you know, had a little bit of healthy food here and there. And I was highly impressed and um, it was just great. Um, I was glad to also see that there was progress made at Rebecca Turner in terms of a nurse being there. Um, the laptops, the carts, um, for those students to proceed to move forward. So that was progress. And as long as we're making progress, I think it's just wonderful. And I would love to see that these teachers get exactly what they need as well. Because they work hard, we have some that have resigned, but we wanna see that these teachers get resources, that they get salaries that they want. Because we do have other people in other places getting them. And I am definitely in their corner. And they, I have teachers who have um, you know, kinda like come to me in my ear. And I am certainly one hundred percent in support of the Mount Vernon City School District teaching staff getting what they probably should have already got. So that's my report tonight. And um, let's continue to make progress. And Frederick Douglass said, without a struggle, there's no progress.
Thank you, Trustee Middleton. Thank you. Just a Jenga.
Tuesday, I was a part of the uh, special education meeting uh, where it was President Kerwin and Trustee Saunders and Ms. McKitty Bromley. Okay, I always, I just remember her as Ms. McKitty. So I'm sorry if I messed up the last name. Um, we went over a schedule for the year. Um, tentatively, November fifteenth, we are going to have an open house at Rebecca Turner. And um, and move on from there. We wanna meet a lot of the parents. Uh, we have different programs um, that we're going to introduce to them. And um, we're moving along, so that's my report.
Thank you. Uh, trust, oh, our student trustee.
So I would like to um, begin by thanking um, Dr. Veronica Smith and President Kerwin for allowing us at Mount Vernon High School to keep one of our greatest assets, which is Ms. Sherlock. Um, we really love Ms. Sherlock at our school. And I'm just so proud to have seen so many of our people at school stand up for her and just to be given a voice to stand up for what they believe in. It was very um, emotional for me since I've been going to that school since ninth grade. So it's really empowering to see students stand up for themselves and what they think is right. Um, I would also like to thank everybody for attending our pep rally, which I would say was a great success. Hopefully we'll have an even better one next year. And yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. See, we did promise, right? And we, we stick to our promise with the teacher. Thank you. Trustee Lindsay.
Okay, we had a security meeting last week. Uh, just to make it brief, uh, at this point in time, I had a discussion with Mr. Fagan. We've, we've hired all the guards for the spots that needed to be filled last year. The regular, uh, excuse me, monitors. The, the regular spots for the monitors, they're all hired. We're just waiting on a few, like three or four more who are still in the process of going through background checks and everything through HR to finish with them. Uh, once those come back, we will be at capacity. We also posted for the per diem guards, uh, for the fill-ins for call-outs. Uh, and hopefully we'll be filling those as well soon enough. Uh, we are, we have been attempting, we've discussed with the city. We're trying to do it internally, come up with a solution for the situation over at STEAM with the uh, issue with the traffic going by and trying to cross kids who really shouldn't be crossing. But we have to come up with a plan to deal with the, the issue. Uh, so we're still in the process of trying to come up with whether or not it'll be handled through the district or through the city. Uh, lastly, the uh, at that meeting, we still have the two SROs who should be coming to us in November. Uh, those will be provided through the Mount Vernon uh, Police Department rather than through the Westchester County, which was the thought in the spring. But uh, Mount Vernon PD's coming through with a couple of SROs for us. So that's fantastic. So we'll have local guys, uh, part of the community. Uh, that's about it for now.
Thank you. Trustee Mitchell.
Okay, so a couple of things. First, I wanna shout out the nurses in the district for all the work that they did to get as many kids cleared for medical clearance for the sports as they did. They, I know that it was a heavy lift and it was a lot of bottlenecking, but I just wanna say thank you to all your efforts. I hope that uh, we were able to meet the demand and uh, really get as many of our children that wanted to play our sports and be involved as possible cleared to uh, do so. The uh, Public Library had a photo shoot just past uh, Sunday that I attended, uh, some, uh, school board trustees, old and new were, were there. It was a really good turnout, uh, lots of people from the community, all Mount Vernon. It was in association with the fifty years of hip-hop. Uh, the mayor was there, it was a very nice turnout. Uh, but uh, it was a very good energy there. Uh, and lots of uh, who's who's of, of Mount Vernon have contributed to our city and school district as well, uh, over the past decades. Um, Honor Academy had Dunk with Dads Day uh, last Thursday. Um, where basically it's a day when dads can come out and they can uh, spend a couple of hours with their child doing physical activities. Um, I don't, I'm not certain any other schools that do it, but I know Honor Academy, I believe this is their second year doing it. Um, and it's really a good event that gives dads the ability to come out with their children. And you know, truthfully, remember that while dads are important, moms are important, parents are important, please be sure you join your PTA. If your PTA is not functional, it's very easy to find out. You can always talk to your principal and find out, hey, do we have a PTA that's functioning? You know, and join. It's not just about bake sales and selling world's famous chocolate. It's much more to it than that. Um, we met with the Facilities Committee Met last week uh, to discuss uh, some really uh, I'm not gonna steal anything from you. I'm not, I'm not gonna do it. I'm gonna leave something for you. So, okay. Right, so, so chaired by uh, Trustee White and uh, with myself and uh, uh, Trustee Middleton was there as well. Uh, we discussed thirty-one points of repairs and updates to the district. And uh, and thanks to Mark Ramandi, uh, Mr. Silver, Mike Ragusa. Uh, your leadership and, and help in pushing these ob, these objectives along is very, uh, very appreciated. Um, what, what was really, what was the main target? And what we really wanna talk about really quickly is the amount of work that's being done in-house by our own employees. So this is reducing our ability, I'm sorry, reducing the need for us to have to go outside and get contractors to come in and charge us exorbitant amounts of money. Where we can get incredibly high-quality work done and meet the needs with our folks who are already working within our ranks. So uh, it, there were several different topics that, uh, several different bullet points. If there were thirty-one bullet points, I believe a little more than half of them were handled by in-house. And that's actually a triumph because we're talking about over hundreds of thousands of dollars saved. So um, thanks very much to our facilities, buildings and grounds people, uh, Mr. Silver, Mr. Ramandi, Mike Ragusa as well. Uh, thank you for all your efforts to get us there. I also sat in on a securities meeting with Deputy Commissioner Jen Lackard and Lieutenant Mann, Lieutenant Sturace, uh, regarding the SROs. As Trustee Lindsay just said, yes, it is good that we're gonna get our SROs. We're getting, we're getting two. And that's, you know, for many different reasons. Um, I just wanna expand on the Gramington Avenue Crossing. That is a school district issue, uh, Dr. Smith. We have to come up with the resolve for that. The city has told us clearly that they are not involved. That's not an elementary school. Um, there are state losses. They have to provide crossing guards for elementary schools, not high schools, which STEAM is a high school. So uh, I know that uh, uh, Dr. Smith is working feverishly on that to get that under control. Um, and I think that's all I have.
And my point is just to back up on what I just said. I don't, I don't need to be the star. But um, so we have been working hard. I wanna give kudos to our cleaners and our head custodians and our custodians. Because they are the ones that are in trenches, believing. And when we had that big flood, um, about two or three weeks ago, it was the custodians and the cleaners and the head custodians getting that building back into shape. So I wanna give them a big shout-out from all of us. And our builders are coming along. And like Juan said, we are saving a lot of money by doing in-house repairs. And I'm giving thanks to Mike Ragusa for that and for all his staff that he's working with. So thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly.
I don't have a report.
Thank you, thank you so much. So um, Trustee Gail. Any report? Okay. Uh, so I, I have report from the Audit um, Committee. The Audit Committee may um, met yesterday, last night on Zoom.
Uh, one minute. Oh. Sorry, can, can she? Wait, one minute, one minute, one minute. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add on to trustee, um, trustee Jenga's um, special ed report that we did go through um, all the months to um, have a meeting with the special ed. Um, and we reached out to the special ed PTA to have them partner with us. And we would like to have a fundraiser to have a sneaker ball at the end of the, of the year. I also spoke with Lisa Maison. Uh, she's the Director of Physical Education and Health. And we are working on starting the Pioneer League um, with the special ed students at the high school. We're waiting for permission slips. Also, uh, thank you, um, Noel Campbell for, for working and getting that um, job fair going last week at the high school on the eighteenth. And as far as the CTE program, uh, we're working with Lisa Yocana to prep, to prepare for the entrepreneurship uh, program at the high school at the house that time left. That's all I have for a um, committee report.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Okay, so I was saying, um, the Audit Committee met um, last night. And um, we spoke about um, doing audits, um, forensic audits. Um, I know um, the board had um, promised the community. And we also said that we need to get our business up and running, everything in compliance. At this time, um, we all agreed that our first forensic audit would be on payroll and in the business office. So we are going to put out the RFP for um, auditors, specialized auditors to do um, a forensic audit on payroll. Um, also, we received the resignation of um, our internal auditor. Um, he resigned um, as of last month, September. He cited that their, his staffing is very short. So he no longer could service um, Mount Vernon School District. So um, we are going to put out a RFP also for um, internal, for an internal auditor. Um, okay, so that's, that's it so far from the Audit um, Committee. We will, later on, we will be doing um, audits on special ed and um, building and grounds. But as we know, the budget, as the budget permits, we will be doing those audits um, at a later date. Now, I actually want to thank um, everyone who came out last week. We had our, the um, Fitness and Wellness Challenge um, Committee. We had our first Zumba um, class and it was well-attended. And I wanna thank everyone who came out and participated in our Zumba um, meet. Our next one, we haven't decided yet, but it will probably be a kickboxing or something, um, again, with, so all of us could get um, moving again, all of us could be exercising. So I invite everyone to stay tuned for the date and for the activity that we will be announcing. Um, and that's, that's it from, from me. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, um, I forgot to make an announcement. So officially today, Academic Power Hour has started. Um, I'm not sure if it started at the other schools, but it started at the high school. So there will be assistance for anybody who needs it after school for regions prep since they're coming in um, in January. Um, I will be there to help ENL students that um, don't speak English, to help them with um, English region so that the graduation rate goes up.
Thank you, yeah, Dr. Smith will be talking about the after-school um, activity and power hour. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, one more committee report, sorry, Mike. Um, we will have it from the Cable um, Committee. Thank you.
Good evening, Test Tests. Good evening, Superintendent. Great dear Board. Good to see you all this evening. Cabinet. Mount Vernon residents. Um, for Cable Commission, I have a small presentation this evening. Uh, we'll do just kinda like what we're talking about from the very beginning of this, which is Mount Vernon High School where the studio is currently located. Okay, let's go back here. Having a little bit of challenges. Okay, first slide here is um, it indicates the control room, which is uh, pretty much one of the two brains of the operation. Um, this is uh, showing a lot of outdated equipment, but believe it or not, um, I would say half of this equipment is still adequate. Um, it still works. Uh, but we definitely need a great deal of upgrading and updating uh, in this part of the facility. Um, this controls the three cameras that we have in the studio. This uh, has a display monitor in the back where you can see the cameras from inside of the studio into the control room. There's also um, a talkback with our headsets so we can speak to the camera operators inside of the studio and um, give any instruction to the talent that is gonna be on camera. Um, next one is the server room. That's the current status of the server room. Most of that rack is empty. Um, there's a couple of pieces of equipment in there that has uh, it's supposed to backup the, the kids' work. Um, there's also was a server that belonged to me. It failed. And we got wiped out of a couple of years' worth of footage. So that's an absolute no-no. I, I haven't put anything in there since. Uh, it needs upgrading and updating. Uh, yet a part of the expensive package to come. This is our lovely dressing room, hair and makeup wardrobe. Uh, we've just recently had Tommy Davidson here uh, before the end of the school year where they filmed the movie in the school. Um, and uh, this is how some, some other talents as well throughout the years. That's in great condition. That's probably the best part of the room. Has a microwave and an air fryer. We used to have the fridge. I don't know where the fridge disappeared to. This is the current status of the classroom. Um, none of these computers work. I had them all removed. They were brought back in for whatever reason. They are sitting on the desk, not working. Um, and those machines all have Windows Seven. And those machines all have Windows 7. Windows 7 is not being supported anymore, just in case somebody didn't keep count. We currently, you know, we're still looking for a teacher for the room to have actual classes going on in this facility. It was once a great place for learning. And here, the children learn theory and editing, which was avid media composer. A little antiquated, if you ask me. We do need the curriculum to be updated as well as the systems for the kids to use. This is the current status of the broadcast system that goes out. That's your Channel 6 and your Channel 18 on Spectrum, as well as Channel 30 and Channel 33 on Verizon. The bottom right with the green bars and the gray boxes, those are Verizon boxes, those are encoder boxes. Those just take the signal that comes from Spectrum and puts it out to Verizon subscribers. Top left, those monitors are just about all burnt out except for one. I don't have really a way of being able to watch the cable TV that's going out to make sure that we're keeping up with the signal. You know, making sure that there's sound going out. We have a lot of complaints, especially for public access. 18, there's no sound going out. It's been chipping in and out. Spectrum has yet to come back to do anything to fix, or Verizon. I haven't seen Verizon since before the pandemic. And this last slide is just, we need your help. Community has to get involved. We need the board on top of things. You know, we're still going through our Chapter 12 right now, Chapter 12 guidelines as a CTAC committee, just to see what rules need to be, you know, updated as far as like bringing people on committees. We're getting a lot of participation and cooperation now from the mayor's office. It seems like she may have two candidates to hand over as well to join us. I think Tim Allen, the director of communications, might be a part of that team, which would be a wise choice. But we're also looking for a couple of more, you know, community members. Please join us on the meetings. They're posted often on CMVNY Facebook page, as well as their website. I would like to hopefully commit this board to helping cross-promote some of these meetings so that some more of the residents can get, you know, gander on what's going on and try to, you know, maybe they can also like trustee Kelly has been a part of our last meeting. We do have a public comment section. Residents, you are being charged peg taxes and fees on your bills. If you have a subscription to any service provider, you are getting charged for these peg grant fees, which we are not receiving as a school district. We are the key holder. We are housing the broadcast equipment, and it is badly antiquated. We are putting out an analog signal. That means that it's not digital like now. It's going to be fuzzy rabbit ears, put the foil on the little antenna on top, and there you go. The Verizon signal does seem to go out the way that the camera put out, you know, a nice sharp 1080p picture, but we're having challenges with Spectrum. I know that they've been a part of our meetings and we're looking to work with the franchisees as best we can. Next meeting comes up in a couple more weeks. I don't have the exact date, but I will definitely make sure that you all have it beforehand. And that's about it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I had a question. So first of all, thank you for this presentation. We've talked in the past about the cable commission years back and the need for attention on it. So thank you also for educating us on it. Can you explain what CTAC stands for really quick?
This is cable television. Cable television. Access channel, yeah.
All right, that sounds good. Okay, so.
Yes, communications.
Okay, so for you to get the update to the antiquated machinery devices and what we have right now, we really need for these cable companies to start basically cutting us checks. This is not, is there money that the city owes us for this? Is this supposed to come out of taxpayer, school tax money? How does this go?
This all comes out of the peg grant fees. So the franchise is supposed to have a separate franchise agreement. They make payments to the city. That's just for being, just to have the right to run their lines through any city. They have to pay that city a tax, basically, a fee. Then there's peg. That is for public education and government. That is supposed to be for the rights to be able to use our public access TV to educate residents, make sure that they're aware of what's going on in their own city. So that's two separate things. So hopefully, these franchisees have been putting money into another account for us.
Right, because imagine so many of our senior citizens are not on Facebook, and they do still rely on Channel 6 and the other channels that are broadcasting. So thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. And where can we find this PEG line on our bills?
This is on your bill, so it'll say something like peg taxes or taxes and fees, and it may be embedded in that taxes and fees section. Always look for taxes and fees. Sometimes it's actually on it as a peg fee.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much. That wraps up our committee reports.
Do we have any old business? We do?
Yes, good evening. I want to say that I'm delighted that we rolled out our after-school program. Thank you, Anna, for that. We do expect all of our buildings to be fully up and running. All of them had something going on this week. And our senior and junior cabinet visited every school, and there's been great feedback. Just so happy. Are we okay? So we're excited about our after-school program, which consists, which really is in operation from Monday to Thursday from 3 o'clock to 5:15. We want to thank Dr. Jones for spearheading this project. So from 3 to 3:15, students will have a snack. From 3:15 to 4:15, power hour. And from 4:15 to 5:15, there will be clubs. We worked hard at this. We really do want to engage our students. We made a promise to the parents, and we are delivering on our promise. Did you have anything that you wanted to add? I also have to thank president. Oh, my goodness, I have to thank our president of the board, Ms. Kerwin. This was really her baby, and she's really pressed for it. We've had many meetings, Dr. Jones, Dr. Doggett. We've had a lot of discussions, and we came to this realization. I want to say that I was on vacation, calling myself being in the sunshine in the Bahamas, and I had three nightly meetings about the after-school program. So I want to thank everyone involved, the principals for making this happen, the teachers, and everyone involved. I do want to say we're also going to pilot a dinner program at two of our schools. It's a pilot. I won't say the two now, but that's up and coming, right, Mr. Ramandi? Do we know when that's going to start? Very good. So that's coming. So we're piloting two schools, but we hope to have dinner for our scholars in all of our schools shortly. President Kerwin, would you like to say anything?
So I really, really want to thank acting superintendent Dr. Smith for listening to me when I came to her about the after-school program because I really wanted to help parents in this district. I really didn't want any other parent to go through what I went through when my child was going through the Mount Vernon School District, where I had to pay almost $1,000 for busing and for after-school programs. So this was really, really, really dear to my heart that I wanted to help the community and help parents. So I also want to thank Dr. Jones, Dr. Doggett, and the principals and the teachers and everyone who were involved with this. I know Dr. Jones, I keep telling Dr. Jones, give me the right numbers. She, I mean, I couldn't have, we couldn't have done this without your Dr. Jones, Ms. Mathematic genius, I called her. And I said, we have to get the right number to go to Mr. Silver. So we were up late at nights on the weekends, waiting for this to roll out. And I, again, I really want to thank the principals because we keep going back and forth with the principals so everything could go smoothly. And here we are now that it's launched. I want to really, really, really thank everyone that was involved with this. I can't thank you enough. And hopefully, next year, we could roll it out sooner when school year starts. And hopefully, by that time, we also have before care, before school care involved. I know Dr. Jones, I know.
I was just going to say, no sooner than we tried to nail down the after-school, here she comes.
The before care.
Before care.
Yes.
Dr. Jones? That's your project as well.
But no, on a serious note, I thank everyone, and I hope the parents and the students. This is an enhancement program. We have, you know, it's not a really extension from the school day. We want them to have fun after power hour, so that's why we came up with all the clubs. So I pray and I hope that everyone be safe. When we thought about this, we said we were going to go Monday to Friday, but we weren't considering that we need nurses in the schools. So we had to cut down a day and cut down an hour. So I want everyone to enjoy, and we look forward for all the feedback so we could build a better program come next year. Thank you again. Thank you so much.
Internal resolutions. We have a motion for 6.1, Human Resources 92A, certified. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 6.2, Human Resources 92B, classified. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 7.1, Authorization to Update Staff for the 2023-2024 MTSS School Teams at Mandela Zolokov School, Leadership Academy, and Benjamin Turner Academy. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion.
I just want to congratulate Ms. Parchment. She became the supervisor of special ed.
We have a motion for 7.2, Authorization to Accept the Letter of Agreement with Concordia Conservatory? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 7.3, Accept a Donation for Zumba Dance Fitness Class?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in, all those in favor? Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 8.1, Update Appointment of Technology Links for the 2023-2024 School Year. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 9.1, Approval of Student Services-Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 6, dated October 17, 2023. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 10.1, Approval of Civil Service Stipend for the 2023-2024 Physical Year for School Board Election Purpose. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Yes, I have a question. Because I believe we went over this last year. I just want to find out, is this based upon the resolution itself? It says it's, that the scope of work is outside of the CBA, we collect the bargaining agreement with CSEA. Is this a stipend or is this out of title pay? Anybody?
You got one.
This was actually included in the union contract back in 2011. And we found a resolution about that, where it was attached to the contract, and it was just left out of the, out of the sheet that shows stipends that are with it. So it is a stipend, but it is a part of the union contract and has been for many years.
I want to add that I did call civil service, and it was okay with them.
That's, I just wanted to make sure it was approved by civil service, and I wasn't going to get a call tomorrow from some CSEA. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 11.1, Authorization to Approve the Mount Vernon Administrative Group Mentorship Program. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 11.2, Authorization to Pay Overtime for the Culinary Arts Teacher? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 11.3, Accept the Resignation of Bruce Singer Financial Consultant? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 11.4, Accept the Resignation of Tobin &amp; Company as Internal Auditor? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 11.5, Accept Memorandum of Agreement for Mount Vernon High School, Class of 2013 Class Reunion? Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. We have a motion for 12.1, Approval of a Claim on Behalf of the Mount Vernon City School District Against the City of Mount Vernon? Questions, concerns, discussions?
Wait, wait.
We have a question?
I have a question. Do we have another, are we going to have another agreement for the interest owed on the taxes?
Yes, so this agreement only provides for $350,000 a month through somewhere around October of '25 to pay off the initial debt from 2018 and 2019. And we also have to have a meeting with the city having to do with the interest, which is somewhere between $1 million and $3 million on that, on those many millions of dollars that were outstanding. So that meeting has yet to be set up, but everybody. So, that meeting has yet to be set up, but everybody's aware that it's going to take place.
Everyone's aware that it's going to take place?
Yes, the meeting just hasn't been set up yet with the Controller's Office, but it's about to be set up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 13.1, To Enter into Executive Session for the Purpose of Discussing Pending Litigation, the Financial History of a Particular Person or Corporation, or Matters Leading to the Appointment, Employment, Demotion, Discipline, Suspension, Dismissal, or Removal of a Particular Person or Corporation, and to Receive Legal Advice on Pending Matters. Need motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. I want to, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We would not be coming back for executive, from executive session.